It's ten o'clock, December 5th, 2016. We're gonna call this meeting to order. Roll call, Smiley.
Here.
Hamlet.
Here.
Here. Approval of the minutes, the last meeting, November 28th, 2016.
Everybody's had time to go through them. I'll approve them. I'll move that we approved those.
I'll second. They look fine. I mean, everybody in favor? Number four, discussion, possible action regarding the following permits. Sim gas, I guess we've just got one. I do. And it's for sim gas for a gas line. I'll make the motion for approval for sim gas in District Two.
I'll second it.
On favor? Okay, number five. Approved, disapproved, monthly reports for the following accessories office, county clerk, court clerk, health department, treasurer's office, election board.
Get all those in, Charlie?
All those are there, yes.
I'll make the motion we approve those.
Got second?
Yeah, I'll second.
On favor?
That damn highway patrol cut their mowers down, so they're setting them down and watching everybody now.[229.22][229.22](laughing) I noticed they parked up here by the subway two times this weekend. Ticket's a ticket. Take it where you can get it.[245.01][245.01](laughing) You know, that is McCullough, he couldn't hardly drive Freedom back. He'd have his hundred miles in.
Right.
I know.
Look right.
Mm-hmm.
Is that just this project started, basically? Or get all the paperwork out of the way?
This one on Lake Creek is adding $20,000 for right-of-way utilities on south of Tacoma. So you can have a consultant do the right-of-way. That's where that one we did a few months ago was capping the federal funds. So this should just add your right-of-way utility amount. So you can hire somebody to do the right-of-way. And the other one on Sand Creek is just an initial funding here. That's that bridge, 2.28. The junction from Cozy Curve, not Cozy, Cozy Bridge. So two point, two miles east, about one and three-fourths on over Compton Bridge.
Let's do six, and then when you guys can discuss that. Number six, discussion, possible action regarding monthly appropriation.
I'll make the motion we accept them.
I'll second it. On favor? Aye.
Brooke said they're up a little bit. Appears about 20,000. Piece would be 60,000. We could never figure out how far behind they are on that.
US 64 and DA 45.
Hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
Grandkids. No, 64 is right here in Alabama. Goes to Cherokee and then...
I was gonna come in Saturday, and then I got...
Forty-five comes from Wodunka. Yeah. That's 281.
I really need to just stay out of this.
Stay home and watch the ballgame.
Takes a bit.
Till after lunch.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, North to Jet.
I watched that old ball. I haven't seen that game ever do that, but that was a pretty good game.
This is a darn good game, actually. Of course, now you see on all the... They're calling for gun duty. They're firing gun duty.
Federal, huh? 281, a federal one?
Yeah. You know, there's no question in my mind, they're pretty evenly matched this year. But when it comes down to your job, of course, it's like that with that everywhere going. I'm just happy to see that it's two Oklahoma teams paying for the championship.
Oh, it's a competitive game.
Yeah. I mean, it's sickening to me.[514.56][514.56](laughing) I did think what that old kid did right there during the game, classy, classy. That P. Ryan taking the knee.
Yeah, that was classy.
I listened to him talk about that after the game. And that's, there are two thought processes to that. Some of them thought that was like rubbing it in. And, you know, you can't win for losing.
Take it out of you want.
Yeah. I still thought it was a class act.
Very, very many, I guarantee you, if he'd been the other running back, he'd have scored. That Nixon. He hits girls, too. If they hit him. Yeah. Only if they hit him.
Yeah. Number seven, discussion, possible action regarding the resolution to execute that certain project agreement for bridge and approaches over Lake Creek, three tenths of miles south of Tacoma. Project STP 176D 154 CI. State job piece number 2558-004 between ODOT and the county.
This is adding $20,000 for right-of-way and $10,000 for utilities. He said Lake Creek, huh?
Yes.
Lake Creek.
Yeah, that's in half an hour south of Tacoma. That way he can have funds to hire somebody to do the right-of-way addition.
Okay. Does that sound good to you, John?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second it.
On favor?
Aye.
And then the next one is just sign, I mean, for sign in the agreement. First one's the resolution, the second one's the agreement itself.
On that number nine, that US 64, isn't it right?
Oh, boy.
It should be US 281.
And so whoever...
It's different on that, too.
...is the initial. He's unmarked him out, but 281 will say 145.
Forty-five's right, it's just a US 64.
And it's wrong on there, too.
Wrong on here. And then give it. What if we need to highlight that area so they'll notice it and put a nickel by?
Is that what that is?
I don't know. Is that a green?
No, that's a permanent.
Existence, it's like about four places.
Brooke, what do you need to do?
It's gonna be that on. Nine and ten.
Why jet?
It's not, it's junction.
Oh.
I know, that's C. Well, hey, I got a phone call (laugh) for someone else wanting to know about jet. Because that...
It does look like that.
It does kinda make it look like a E, but it's a C.
I thought we were taking over a new county.
I thought so, too, so don't feel bad.[746.83][746.83](laughing)
I just typed it the way it was typed in there.[752.25][752.25](laughing)
Actually, our book's got a problem.
I'd take my glasses off and look at it, see it.[759.54][759.54](laughing) We're working on it. Alphala County, yeah, I guess.
Get all those signed. Okay, number eight, discussion, possible action regarding the agreement for project STP 176D 154 CI, state job piece 2558-0, over Lake Creek, three miles south of Tacoma. Same, same project, just the agreement. And it was on that same deal?
Same.
Same paper?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, we've already approved them. But we'll do, make a motion to approve that, John, if you would please.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
On favor, aye.
Aye.
Number nine, discussion, possible action regarding the resolution to execute that certain project agreement for bridge and approaches near, oh, I mean, approaches over north-south 246 over Sand Creek, 2.3 miles east and 1.7 miles north of junction, US 64 and 45. And that's supposed to be 281.
281.
Yeah.
And state highway 45.
Okay. And that would be with the correction of that. And for project J 2978-3004, RB, state job piece 2978-204, by and between Woods County and the ODOT.
That's is a cross town project on 2.8, that's in John Doe.
Okay.
D three.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Four places between the resolution and agreement for the initial buy before we correct it to 281 and 45.
Okay, and are the, is the paperwork all together on both of them? I'll move on to D, to 10. We, we're all in favor of nine, and then we'll take action regarding the agreement for that project, same project, which is just part of the same. Nine and 10 go...
Go together.
Go together as well, seven and eight did, so...
Do I need to make that motion?
Yeah, go ahead and do it.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
On favor? Aye.
I'm gonna correct it on first three pages. They're back together.
And you want me to initial?
Initial buy on that, another green highway.
On several of them pages?
Yeah, each page is total on each, so we're just back together.
Not your, not appropriations and monthly reports.
Can you use your drone? Do you have the Lake Creek? You, you only got a certain height limit you can use. So you don't have to call airport and tell them.
Yes, certainly, we've been done more actions that...
If it were control.
Control and all that.
Or your tower.
Yeah.
If it were high.
It would be a different process. Like, if it were control, it would be a different process. I slipped gear process, and suddenly I'd be the one that...
Probably would be flying IFR.
Right, right. We have a plan then. Now all that's been, all that's already...
Actually, putting out confused translations on.
I don't need to initial up there.
No, that's not supposed to fly within five miles of the airport.
I just found two of them.
Can I fly in there?
Go ahead and look through there again.
Yeah. A lot. I said, guy in Garfield County, a year happened a weekend ago. They heard something. Somebody had a drone flying over their property. They were on the road, they were sitting on the road, and they sent it out to look around.
That's interesting. This state has passed a law that says that I can't fly over your property if you have it posted.
Right, that was the question was. These people have to post leased and posted.
Yeah, if they haven't posted no drones, then it's free, you can fly over.
Really?
Yeah.
But the question they had was, they leased the land from the landowner to hunt on, and they had to post, you know, posted leased or hunted. Well...
Does that give them the right to post?
But does that, again, they didn't do anything to them, because, well, the landowner really didn't care if they were flying it, but the hunters did. But there was some question there, who actually had the right to tell them they could or couldn't, you know?
Right, and I'm not sure, of course, you probably wouldn't want to continue to fly if landowners said no.
Yes.
I, I think they really do need to dot their eyes across the T and put a post sign on their fence, you know? That's what all the calls for.
I'd put a couple rounds through it.[1144.04][1144.04](laughing)
And that's why you'd probably want to pay attention to the landlord.
Didn't they come out, Randy, didn't they tell you, or didn't like the fire situation that tanker won't fly?
Well, yeah, they...
That's the worst thing.
One of them wants to know.
That's one of the rules, is that you're not supposed to fly over emergency equipment.
Right.
And the question is, though, what's over? Like...
Can you keep your company?
I took from my airplane some pictures.
Then you'll send me a...
Out by Danny, what's his name, out of West Town.
Danny Harris.
Harris. And I did it with my own airplane, which is theoretically legal. But I was shocked, I got up there, shot a picture, and was shocked to see some tankers dropping orange stuff on the fire. And I thought, ooh, I'm getting out of here. Even though, I think it's legal for me to fly my own airplane, you sure don't want to...
I think we could, we could have a drone, a county drone for that matter, to over, overfires until we come in, called aerial support.
Right, right.
And I think at the end of the day, I missed one, at the end of the day, they'll have one for their...
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And actually, you really don't want to be over the fire or whatever. You want to be a...
Right.
...slay.
Yes.[1234.66][1234.66](laughing) There's another, Randy.
Yeah, I see.
He didn't listen to it.
Another spot?
Yeah, he missed. Oh, I did three of them. Is there four? Oh, up here.
There's four. Got it. It makes somebody to fly it down there. I think it's the first Northwestern football game.
Oh, there was one.
And I had all sorts of people come to me and say, hey, I saw your drone.
There was one.
No, it wasn't me, because you're not supposed to fly over stadiums.
Yeah. So much for the paperclips.
We get to have a bigger job. Give the bond, I mean, something like that.
Well, I did it twice, and they were in them other.
Well, it's a fall.
But it was the first four pages. Let me know.
No, this three.
Those four?
Yeah, one. Four places, I guess. Four of them.
Oh, yeah.
But I did two the first time, and I just did three more.
Then I would find.
Yeah.
I mean, I was watching, they love the sticks.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever. Okay, we're done with that, I hope.
Sign to her.
It is Monday. Number 11, discussion, possible action regarding the resolution to execute that certain project agreement supplement number two for grade drain and surface on northwest 237, beginning approximately five miles north of US 64 and extending three miles north, project number J 30492004, state job piece number 3049004, by and between Woods County and ODOT.
They, there's 500,000 SD, federal subsidy funds left this year, 2007. And they divided it up between the eight projects, so you've got 62,500 federal funds on your road.
On, on that, that road fraud, on the road fraud.
On the road fraud.
Right.
Down to three miles. The one that we submitted last...
Over a?
Yeah. No, it's a...
No.
That's a... Yeah, grinding it up.
Where we're going, yeah.
Complete job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But anyway, you've got 62,500 federal funds.
So now that, we okay that, meaning we start next week, right?
Yeah.
When, you gonna grind it up and let them run on for six years, or?
Yeah. Six, seven, yeah. Something like that.
That's already done.
We're gonna call, we're gonna get on, we're gonna get on the hotline, call Trump, telling him it's a shovel-ready job.
Bring him in.
I'll move that we approve that.
I'll second. On favor?
Aye.
And we'll do 12, too. Discussion, possible action regarding the agreement for project J 30492004, state job piece 3049004, by and between Woods County and ODOT.
I'll make the motion we approve that one also.
I'll second. On favor?
When will they do that?
The project is, it's a return plan, which was...
This year?
February, February 10 opening. All of them coming back.
Start this, this summer, about weed harvest.
Yeah. Yeah, not weed harvest.
Yeah.
I don't make math.
It don't change, though, there ain't gonna be no weed harvest.
That's all right.
That do a lot of...
We gotta have it good with the van, right?
That's all right.
It's not like it's just making a lot of money off of it, are they?
Probably been well off, not even soaked, just wondering the way things look.
Putting press to the new school, maybe.
Yeah, that's great.
Seven of them, huh?
Should be AM.[1542.04][1542.04](laughing)
We're gaining.
Number eight.
By the time we get out of here, we might have it all.
It's like a quiz, Randy.
It's on the first three pages.
Find the places to sign.[1552.33][1552.33](laughing) Kind of like doing a crossword puzzle.[1555.54][1555.54](laughing)
Okay. That's why I thought you better double-check, make sure.
Surely if you did one, they'd fix it on all of it.
They might function like me.
Well, I signed it.
I'm paid.
I signed it first, you don't worry. They should get you right-of-way, probably after that, then you go back and cover it up for it, and then try to do that. For following month and a half, should get you right-of-way, I think, for that one, then we'll...
You don't want to go, we will do a little bit?
No, I will.
I don't want to either. He's too busy.
I seen that tree down there, it's, the big limb fell off of it.
I don't know nothing about...
Somebody pushing it, I mean, limb, a big limb.
Global warming or something like that, maybe, yeah. That tree died up there on that one, for sure. About that big around.
About there, is it, is it Tacoma?
No, on the, there north, south of Barra.
Oh, yeah.
It should have been out before they built the bridge. I think they built the bridge around the tree.
Around the tree.[1661.54][1661.54](laughing)
Now it's just a big old scum there.
Probably somebody chained herself to the tree and had to build around it.
It has a big old hard carved in it with somebody's initials, "Let Me Do." It's in the bird file now.
I think one of the big names, they covered the bridge, and it was on a, one of the MTA concrete blocks, and they teed the floor up. Finally, County, kept the screen and killed it.
She worked from a wife. Children's coming to school.
And they started... Put the beam down, like, really.
I don't know where it's at.
Probably, oh, oh, that four mile and a half.
Yes, I do. From where she worked at Kennedy and Co.
Yeah, yeah, she worked there.
Yeah.
Ready, roll?
If you are, I can handle it.
Number 13, discussion, possible action regarding the building lease between the city and county for suite C in the amount of $735 per month for the election board. It's just same agreement as last time.
Right, and we're, we did get them to change it to, to end June 30th, and then we'll start the new fiscal year. We'll get it back on track like it should have been.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
On favor? There you go. Number 14, discussion, possible... Number fourteen, discussion possible action regarding the resolution to junk a floor buffer ID number D six two zero 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 one.
That's not Steve's ID number, is it?
No.
No.
What's it, junk, you need to make that one clear to me, did you?
Uh, not the buffer, not the-
The piece and quit.
The equipment, yeah, the equipment, not the-
Not operated.
Not operated.
I'll make the motion to accept that.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Okay, number fifteen, discussion possible action regarding the resolution to junk two laser printers, ID number C two fifty-one dash oh seven and, and C two fifty-one dash oh eight, and that'd be in front of the treasurer's office.
Right.
I'll make that motion to accept that.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
You made the motion, can't, David?
Did he, did he say, I urge it to still what? Okay, number sixteen, under new business, we just broke in, there'd be a paper that Allen Wharton is requesting the commissioner's help in funeral cost. Maybe I need to call him and see, I know, uh, if we need to act on this now. Well, I imagine they need, they need to know something.
For the, what was talking about?
Well, for his funeral costs, I'm, I'm guessing it's somebody with no family, no money.
Hoppers.
Yeah, uh, and, and we, we do bear some responsibility for that, we have in the past, did it, but I think we need to take action on it.
We have a fund for that, that engine under, however you pronounce.
Yeah, yes, this is Randy McMurphy, I had a note here to call Allen, just so you know, you're on speakerphone, and we're, this is an open meeting, you're under new business, got a call about help with a funeral.
I'll need to do it by call page here, just a moment.
Okay.
Hello, Randy?
Hi, Allen.
Yeah?
I know he told you, Brooke gave me your note that you called down here, we're down to new business, and I thought I'd call, you are on speakerphone, so tell me what you got.
Okay, I have a young man, uh, thirty-four years old, passed away at his home, it's Randall, R A N D A L L K J J Y Parker, he lived out there. Excuse me, son, seventeen twenty-seven cherry, here in Alba.
Okay.
That's where, uh, on the Saturday, the third, uh, they found him at, uh, oh, around two o'clock.
Okay, so what, what do you need from us?
Uh, the family is, uh, doesn't have much money, so they're wondering if the county could help them on paying for his cremation.
Okay, what, how, what are we talking about money-wise?
Uh, let's see here, I had to put it together, because I didn't know I was gonna get done this, get called back by the, this staff, so, uh, it's under a thousand dollars that I can do it for.
Okay.
Five hundred and fifty dollars for cremation, uh, the transport, the transportation down the city is not gonna be there, uh, with you guys assisting me, we can get out a two hundred dollar cremation fee at the discount the state charges me. I have to see the letter stating that the county is taking care of this services and the way of the cremation fee, and, uh-
Okay.
I have, uh, I got a few others, but, uh, that's, I would say I was taking out the cremation fees two hundred and the five fifty for cremation down there, and usually a transportation down city, but we don't have that, so, uh, and, uh, I get a hundred dollar grant, that's, uh-
Okay.
Get by with that.
Okay, well, with, do you know the rules, I mean, without us looking it up, I, I guess my, my only concern is, is that if everybody, uh, uh, what, if everybody comes up with this deal, where do we stand, is there any kind of criteria that you all need to follow, or we do, I mean, I guess I'm asking-
It's just if, if you have the funds there, it could help me with this, if not, I'm gonna have to eat it, one way or the other, you know?
Okay, okay, well, I'm, I'm pretty certain that, that we will, but I, I guess we'll, we'll discuss it right now and go from there.
Okay, and I'll try to get you this statement put together, and, uh, you know, we bring it down there to the courthouse, as soon as I can get it together.
Yes.
Okay, I'll give it down there.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, bye.
Okay, you guys heard the deal, I mean, my only question is, is, is you just don't wanna start, set precedents or whatever, and I, do you know, Shelley, if there's any?
In the past, I do know that we paid for cremation on, um, a couple of people, that since I've been-
Right.
In that office.
But I didn't know how you go about proving that nobody's got any money, I mean, just everybody could pop up with a deal like this, is-
They could.
That'd be my concern.
Is what?
Not that we sure don't wanna help somebody out.
Right, and that could happen, um, in one of the instances that I know of, um, the, the parents didn't have the money, I do, I do think the children probably would've, but we had to go ahead and take care of it anyway, because, yeah, they're a state-
Didn't a few years ago, we had an unclaimed person passed here to jail or something?
Well, I know we-
Uh, well, we had one that we paid for that had passed away in our jail quite a few years ago.
I imagine each one's gonna be kind of a case.
It is, it's gonna be, it's just gonna be whether we, yeah.
If we wanna investigate it and figure out whether they- Well, that's what I was wondering, if there was anything we needed to follow.
I probably need to ask Brian, how I can go about that, as far as finding out.
And it, but I didn't hear everything he said, but if we don't take care of it, then wait on, he, he has to-
He was gonna have to eat it, so.
And we, and we don't want him to have.
I pretty well says it.
Right, right.
Because I think he can pretty well find out.
Yeah.
If it's in life insurance, then he, he definitely has the right to find that out, so he's probably already found out that there's not gonna be any-
I don't think he'd have called us.
No.
Right.
And that's what happened in that other one, too, and like I said, I know those children could've, but it's not, they're, it's still not their place, they don't wanna do it, they don't have to. So, in this, I would say, he's probably already found out everything.
Well, I don't have a problem with it, as long as we just don't, everybody start asking us to do that.
Well, we only have limited funds.
Oh, yeah, we only have limited funds.
Right, I mean, I agree.
And we have enough in that house to take it.
Right, but I mean, though, I mean, when it runs out, until the next fiscal year, we actually, we out.
Right.
Do we need to, do we need to approve now, or is it something we're waiting for Allen to bring?
As long as Allen knows he's gonna get the, the money, I think we probably, should we put this on our agenda next week and do it as a formal approval, don't you think?
Yeah, we'll put it on our agenda next week, and we'll have it available to others.
Right, I mean, I, I guess, I guess what I'd entertain is a motion that we take care of it unless we find out there's something illegal or, or unethical about it, or whatever.
I don't think there's anything wrong with you making a motion today, because it was not known.
Well, that's true.
Right, I mean, as far as that, it's just-
As long as we stated that, you know, unless unforeseen circumstances come up, I'll make the motion that, that we accept it, you know, under the conditions that have been set for us today.
Okay. Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Any other new business?
I don't have any.
Okay, number seventeen, approve, disapprove, blank purchase orders.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Favor, aye. Number eighteen, a motion to adjourn.
I'll, I'll second.